The Columbus City Council meeting for July 18th, 2022 will come to order. In compliance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, statute 84-1407, a current copy is posted in the back of this room. Would you please, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte, Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Kresha.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Councilman Heimer.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted in this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. At any time during this meeting, if anyone in our audience would like to address any items that are on our agenda, we'd ask you to please come forward, give your name, address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the July 5th, 2022 city council meeting. Item four B, minutes of the July 5th, Community Development Agency meeting. Item four C, reappointment of Chuck Whitney as delegate to the Nebraska Cooperative Government Commission for a one-year term. Item four D, reappointment of Keith Gilmore to the Board of Appeals for a three-year term. Item four E, resolution number R22-87, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the amended resolution number RR, or number R22-34, to correct the describer's errors to the preamble of the legal description of wishbones addition. Item four F, resolution number R22-88, approving the agreement with Adam LaBordi in an amount not to exceed $24,500 to provide geographical information system support services. Item four G, resolution number R22-89, to rename Habitat Drive to Isaiah Drive, west of 41st Avenue to west line of New Hope Second Subdivision. The Planning Commission recommends approval. Item four H, resolution number R22-90, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four I, finance department reports. Item four J, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven A, public hearing. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee report of activities presented in accordance with the Columbus Economic Development Plan. I can speak real quick before you ask for against or for. There hasn't been any applications in the last six months to the Economic Development Fund. There has been activity that has started. The city, together with Neighbor Works, has started a housing project. So if we are successful in that grant that we've applied for, we will need to use a half a million dollars of these funds as our matching dollars, again, for an affordable housing project. The fund presently sits about $2.6 million. Do you want to ask?
Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? Anyone here to speak against this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing. Consider a text amendment to the Unified Land Development Ordinance for the City of Columbus zoning chapter to allow gaming facilities and commercial recreation in rural residential zones RR with a special use permit, and to amend table 4-2 of Chapter 1, Article 4, to provide for the designation of a special use permit in an RR zone for gaming facilities and commercial recreation. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C, one, ordinance number 22-16, approving the amendment to the Unified Land Development Ordinance to allow gaming facilities and commercial recreation in an RR rural residential district zone with approval of a special use permit. No motion is necessary. This is a first reading. We'll have a second reading on August 1st. If no, if we hear no negative feedback or items that need to be addressed before that, we likely will recommend suspending the final reading and passing on August 1st.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we need no action. We move on to.
Item seven C, public hearing. Application of Columbus Community Hospital Incorporated to rezon property located at 3912 38th Street from UC Urban Commercial District to B2 General Commercial District and amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. This has been continued from the June 20th, 2022 meeting, and the Planning Commission does recommend approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, one, ordinance number 22-16, approving the amendment to the Unified Land Development Ordinance to allow gaming facilities and commercial recreation in an RR rural residential district zone with approval of a special use permit. No motion is necessary. This is a first reading. We'll have a second reading on August 1st. If no, if we hear no negative feedback or items that need to be addressed before that, we likely will recommend suspending the final reading and passing on August 1st.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we need no action. We move on to.
Item seven C, public hearing. Application of Columbus Community Hospital Incorporated to rezon property located at 3912 38th Street from UC Urban Commercial District to B2 General Commercial District and amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. This has been continued from the June 20th, 2022 meeting, and the Planning Commission does recommend approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C, one, ordinance number 22-17, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 22-17 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 22-17 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven D, public hearing. Application of Hornbacher House Moving Incorporated on behalf of Nick Larson for a permit to move a house from 2055 40th Avenue to a location outside of the city limits. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 22-17. You let me get all the, you let me get all the way through that without saying.
I was looking at him and I was going to.
Went right over my head.
Okay, anyway. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 22-17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 22-17. Any discussion?
It's a good thing because everybody left.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven D, public hearing. Application of Hornbacher House Moving Incorporated on behalf of Nick Larson for a permit to move a house from 2055 40th Avenue to a location outside of the city limits. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. They figured it was good.
Item seven D, public hearing. Application of Hornbacher House Moving Incorporated on behalf of Nick Larson for a permit to move a house from 2055 40th Avenue to a location outside of the city limits. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed in the application of Hornbacher House Moving Incorporated on behalf of Nick Larson for a permit to move a house from 2055 40th Avenue be approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries.
Item 10, reports of council committees. Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee, July 11th, 2022. Item 10, do we need to do anything with that, Robin? Is there any?
Let the report be adopted. Oh.
Do we need to adopt?
Not on the public property, on the traffic.
Item 10B, Traffic Control Device Committee report for the second quarter of 2022. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends the quarterly report of the Traffic Control Device Committee be approved.
I move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
I just got a question. How soon are they going to put that four-way up on 39th and 31st? I just about got whacked again.
Yeah, I talked to the street department here a week or so ago, so they kind of indicated the next couple of weeks they'd get that up.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10C, 2023 Pavement Management Program and Priority List. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends the 2023 Pavement Management Program and Priority List be approved as presented.
Move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10D, the 2023 One and Six-Year Road Plan. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends the 2023 One and Six-Year Road Plan be approved as presented.
Move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
I don't think that's, we need to set the public hearing for that.
Okay, before we vote, what do you have to say there, Mr. Bogus?
Second.
Robin, do you have the date that we'd set that public hearing for? I think it was August 15th at 7:00 PM.
So that should be in the motion?
Yep.
The motion should be, we should set a date for August 15th.
The public hearing set August 15th for 7:00 PM.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the hearing for August 15th at 7:00 PM. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
No, if it wants me to do it again.
Yes.
Heimer.
Yes.
Jablonsky.
Yes.
Yes.
Lor.
Yes.
Roth.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 10E, request for proposals for the sale and renovation of the library building at 2419 14th Street. This building, the Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends staff be authorized to submit requests for proposals for the purchase and renovation, or for the sale and renovation of the library building at 2419 14th Street.
Move this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Just want to point out to the public, it's, as Tara said, it's this building, but it would happen, nothing would happen until after we're in that building. It's just trying to get ahead of the game and be thinking what's best for this.
Yeah, we don't want this building to sit vacant longer than it needs to.
So, all right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, application of the Friedhof Room at Schwazier's for special designated liquor license in an outdoor area at Frankfurt Square, 2614 13th Street, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM on August 19th, 2022, for music concerts.
Mr. Mayor, move for the application of Friedhof Room at Schwazier's for special designated liquor license at Frankfurt Square from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM on August 19th, 2022. Be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
How does this work now that we approved the license for the Legion to have the beer garden, and that's fenced off, and then this isn't? So how do, how does that work?
This will.
Will they be able to walk out into the Frankfurt Square then?
This SDL will have to have fencing as well.
Okay.
Whenever you own SDL.
Identify yourself, please. We know you, but.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, Rob Gasper, 2309 19th Street, and also the owner of the Friedhof Building. But yeah, the SDL, under the state rules, it will be a forfeit area to where we'll enclose. Since we do have an existing liquor license, you don't need the double barrier. It's just a four-foot barrier to designate where you come in and out, and there'll be wristbands that'll be in use, and then it'll basically.
That stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and then it'll be a little more full service, so that's why we'll have, you know, we'll have a bar area and we'll have seating for people. So it'll just be a little more of a full service than, than the usual music we, we have over there. So I'm kind of excited about it. I think it's a great venue to have music, so I'd sure like to, you know, get, get this, get this one, and then, you know, have some bigger nights over there and attract people from downtown Columbus. I think it just really adds to the quality of life, anything you can do for the, you know, we're not, we're not, sure not here to diminish the quality of life. We're here to add the quality of life, especially the, you know, for families to enjoy music, so.
I understand completely. I was just trying to figure out how it works between the two beer gardens.
Okay.
And this is the weekend, this is the weekend after.
This is the weekend after Columbus Days. Yep, yep, and I already communicated with the, with the Columbus, the police, you know, when they did their pre-interview, you know, anything that they have to suggest, I mean, we're, we sure will listen and, and, you know, heed any advice that they have too. So we want to work with people, not against them, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, application of NBC Capital LLC for special designated liquor license in the outdoor area on the Loop River Sandbar south of the Ramada Inn from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM July 30th, 2022, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM July 31st, 2022, for a beer garden.
Mr. Mayor, I ask to abstain from voting on this agenda item because I have a conflict of interest because I'm a member of the NBC Capital LLC.
We have a second for abstain. We have a motion and a second for Councilman Jablonsky to abstain from voting on this item. I do not see any reason why he would need to leave if he wants to just sit and not vote, council. Would that be?
That's fine if there's no objection to that.
Any objections to Councilman Jablonsky staying?
Hmm.
All right, come on, get it out there. Let's go, come on. Seeing none, we'll continue without Councilman Jablonsky. All right, we have a motion here. Any discussion?
I think the motions to abstain, right, so you'd want to vote on that.
So now, now we'll need, okay, we need to vote on, we need to vote on Councilman Jablonsky sitting and being quiet. Can we do that? All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
She doesn't have it.
No, she doesn't, you're right.
It's not.
It's not in there, I understand, understand.
Heimer.
Yes.
Jablonsky.
Abstain.
Kresha.
Yes.
Lor.
Yes.
Roth.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the application of NBC Capital LLC for a special designated liquor license on Loop River Sandbar south of Ramada Inn from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM July 30th, 22, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM July 31st, 22, be approved.
Can we add contingent upon the hold harmless being passed? Yeah, can you?
With adding the contingency, contingency of the harmless agreement to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application of NBC Capital for special use designated liquor license to go along with resolution R2291 being passed. Right?
That's fine.
All right, any discussion, please? Well, if this is both items being included, do we discuss both items, or do you pass this one and then move on to the second one?
You could pass this one and move on to the second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, one, resolution number R22-91, approving the hold harmless agreement with Columbus Inaction Incorporated for use of city property with river access south of the Ramada Inn. I know Scott Miller's here too, but we have been working together, city staff and Scott, to come up with this agreement. Obviously, this SDL would take place on city property. It's a exceptional area as it's located in the floodway. It's located south of the levee, so people will have to cross the levee to get to the area, and we all know there's lots of regulations with that, so that's why the hold harmless agreement is necessary. And Scott, feel free to come up and, and add in here, but we have been working together on this agreement, and I believe the agreement as written today includes a provision that if attendees at the event cause damage to the levee, that Columbus Inaction would hold responsibility for correcting any damage. And it's my understanding that Columbus Inaction is not amenable to that condition, so I don't know, Scott, if you want to come up or say anything, but from the city's perspective, the levee is a, it's a critical infrastructure asset to the city, and if there is damage to the levee because of the SDLs and the events on the south side, that's why that provision is in there. So if somebody tears up the levee for some reason while they're down there having a fun time at the sandbar, that we would have to go back to Columbus Inaction and seek, you know, corrective action. Go ahead, Scott.
Scott Miller, 2204 14th Street, president of Columbus Inaction. And we completely understand the situation that you're presented with here and, and honor that. Our side of it is that as a nonprofit and talking to our insurance agents and also our attorney, that puts us in a liability position that really is a no-win situation for us. It, it's outside our special use area, so all our activities are going to be south of the levee, and people are just going to traverse that to get to the activities. Trying to control that is going to be very difficult for us, and even if we see something, we can't act on it because we don't have neither the authority or jurisdiction to act because that would create a different liability situation for us as well. So we're just asking for that, we'll take responsibility for our, our people to make sure we keep the levee in good shape and stay off the levee, stay on the concrete pathway as we move stuff in and off there, but to ask us to accept the burden of liability for all the people who might come in and out that could happen on any day of the week beyond what we're doing, we just feel that's, we're not prepared to handle that type of liability. Questions?
Isn't there a pathway already established?
Yes, the concrete pathway.
So couldn't we have fencing?
That's up to you. I mean, if it's, we can help put that up, but we just make sure we don't damage the levee putting the fence up too.
Yeah, you can't put any stakes in the levee. You, you could do like a freestanding like post and flag sort of fence to keep people on the path, but that, you know, that's probably not going to prevent every.
I mean, we put Scott's hat on and totally understand the concern and the liability. Now put our hat on and totally understand the concern and the liability of the levee. And I, I mean, as much as these are the kind of activities we want to find a way to do, you know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable without being able to have some kind of an agreement. I mean, I don't think the city, I don't think the city can take that responsibility on itself. That's, that's my position as the mayor. I don't, I don't believe the legal advice would give us that comfort level without having something like this.
And I didn't say that, but I've been discussing with Neil, Gene, and Rick the conditions of this agreement for as long as we've been working on it.
And I, and I know conversations with the core, you know, damage to the, Mr. Slava, you worked, you worked the levee.
I think as is proposed, we'll video the day prior, the day after, so if there's any questions or something happens prior before that, that's probably about all we can do with it, and then we'll go from there if we can fence it and try to keep the traffic in one area. I'm not on board with it, to be honest with you. I'm just trying to keep the people traversing over the levee and off the path is not in our best interest, but I think, I understand what he's saying, but like I says, we'll go through and do a video the day before, and then we'll do a video after the event, and that way, so to speak, keeps everybody honest, and then if something's prior or later or after they leave, that, you know, we'll have some video of it.
Councilman.
Scott, will you provide people to police the area for litter?
We'll have both security there, looking at, working with Blue Knight Security. That's for the beer garden and sandbar area itself, but the number of people we'd have to have, again, to try to control, well, the bigger issue is not just having people there to control the levee, but if something happens, we can't do anything about it because we're not legally, we can't legally enforce anything.
But you're going to clean up after yourself.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the hold harmless. We're just asking to remove the word invitees from the hold harmless clause, not to eliminate the whole thing, because we, again, we can control our licensees. Broaden this out just a little bit, this is kind of a test run. We have a number of bars who have interest in doing the same thing, and we try to make this an entertainment district to compete with Norfolk and Omaha in their river districts. So it's just a kind of a testing ground, if you will, to see how things proceed, what challenges we might have. We may do one if you accept it and find out this just isn't going to work, and we would accept that. And, you know, and I, like I said, I understand your position, so whatever decision you make, we're going to be okay with it, but we just like to try and make a venue for the community that hopefully bring people from outside our community to Columbus and stay and eat and play and support our community.
Scott, will this be for four-wheelers, four-wheelers getting on and off the river? Are, are airboat, are just airboats or?
Neither. So if a four-wheeler or airboat wants to come up, they have to come down the river and to the location, stay off the levee. This would be just people walking to and from.
I see.
And trying to control that cutting across because we're going to put porta-potties down at the bottom of the pathway, so hopefully they just have to walk that way to get to the porta potty. It's not going to do me any good just to cut straight across.
All right, thank you for explaining that.
You know, I, I am uncomfortable without having, Neil, taking that one word out, does, do you have any comment on that?
So the council realizes, if you look at the.
So, so the council realizes, if you look at the proposed agreement, it's in paragraph 12, and it's, uh, damages the levee, and so what Mr. Miller is asking is the word invitees get taken out on that. Uh, the way our office looked at it is, is, uh, the whole purpose of having that down there is to invite people and patrons and stuff down there, so, uh, our recommendation from the legal perspective is that to have, have it in, have it in there for, for, for that reason.
Any other comments?
We're, what we're talking about is one word in here, the invitee, and my question is, is what kind of damage can an invitee do?
Significant. I mean, I, if they're on a four wheeler, or, yeah.
Mr. Slava, would you want to give an idea?
It could be, like, it's like stated, four wheeler, side by side, or if it would happen to rain during or after the event, during the event, one day or the other, we could have significant damage just from foot traffic, that we erode the ground and, uh, caused damage, so.
And we, and I think Scott knows this, I, I feel like myself and staff, Gene, have spent a lot of time, we really want this, we wanted this to happen, and, um, that's why we're here, but, um, like I said earlier, if, if in, after these events, something happens that is caused by an attendee, an invitee at one of these events, and it amounts to $15,000 worth of damage and grading and seeding on the levee, and I come forward with that, and you guys took out invitees, I'm going to say, I told you, you know what I mean? You know, I'm just putting it out there. Um, that could very well happen. That could, uh, because I could not go back to Scott and say, can you please pay this bill? If we take that out.
It's no different than the comfort you might have with a term life insurance policy. You know, are you going to need it, or are you not going to need it? We feel we might, we feel we need this to cover, you know, our liability. Is it, is it going to become a reality of need? How do you know? It's the council's comfort. It's the council's comfort.
I particularly, I'm comfortable without the invitee.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
How much distance are we talking about off of the concrete path that people have to cross to, to get to the sandbar?
They're not cutting, they're not supposed to leave the concrete path.
But there's no, their concrete path does not go into the river.
It goes over the levee, but it, and it kind of goes if-
Goes under the bridge.
Yeah, it goes at an angle, like from the easternmost portion of the Ramada's parking lot, kind of directly south of that, and then it cuts back towards the bridge. So if people park in Ramada's parking lot closer to the highway, they're probably going to cut through the grass and come down and then go over the levee if there's no fencing. Right? That's just, it's the shortest, the shortest path between two points is probably the good path they're going to take. Um, and we recognize that, which is why this is in there.
That's kind of why I asked about fencing, you know, if the fencing went along there to direct him, direct him to the path, to get him to go over the path, doesn't keep him from not going up and over, but-
Parking in the park, what you're looking at?
In the Ramada.
There's not a lot of good parking there.
Uh, we'd also include the Ramada parking lot in the back, close to the entry point of the-
That, so that would help with, with the idea of-
Yes. So, you, you know, depending on what happens here tonight, we, we still want to look at this as a long-term plan. How do we best protect the levee and provide a, a venue for the, the, uh, citizens and then neighbors? So, you know, we're open to suggestions, like your fencing idea, uh, but, you know, it's going to have to be done together because Clemson Action, quite frankly, doesn't have any money. So, uh, it's, it's going to be difficult for us even to respond back to any damages because of the lack of funds, and according to our insurance, if it's on the levee itself, uh, that, uh, we probably would, if it's intentional, we wouldn't have coverage for that. If it's unintentional, it just happens, yeah, we can, our insurance would cover that type of thing. Uh, but they also brought, uh, does the, the city have insurance on levee itself?
We haven't, we're insured, yes.
Would that cover if there's damages?
Again, it depends how it happens and what proof we have and-
You have video proof.
All those things. Before and after, yeah, not during.
Well, something else to consider too, with the dry weather, just recently hay in that area, you know, if there's, somebody throws a cigarette down or something, we have a fire, there you could have your grass replacement and-
Mm-hmm.
Significant damage right away that would add up. That could be a result of the people that are there, so, uh, you know, it could be anything could happen, but-
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know how well it's going to be controlled and, uh, you know, here in nature, they're not going to stick to the path, though, you know, so we, we hope for the best. I'd like to see it happen too, we want to promote it, but, uh, we got to try to protect ourselves.
Is there any way we could do fence from the-
Parking lot.
The edge of the, uh, Loop River Bridge across on the north side of the park and between the park and the Ramada lot, so even like a, an orange, you know, temporary construction fence, that ta- that goes all the way across over to the entry point of the trail from the levee, so that people cannot come from the western parking lot of the Ramada and cross? They would have to follow that fence all the way down to the entry point of the trail.
Kind of follow that current fence line.
Mm-hmm. Would you, would, could, would you guys do that?
Longer to remove that liability portion of it.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just, I still don't think you should remove the invitees, that's not my recommendation, but I'm just trying to say, if you do, there should probably be some other safeguards put in place.
I, I have to agree with city administrator that I don't believe without the safeguard of the hold harmless that we as a city can be comfortable. However, are there some things that we could come up with if we can? You know, I, I think it's worth trying. Everybody wants this to happen, but yet, you know, we have to look out for the better, the betterment of the entire community. And I mean, as much, as much as I would be one that would be down there, I, you know, sitting in this seat, I, I can't feel comfortable without the hold harmless. And we can move forward with a vote if there are no more discussions and see where it goes from there.
Mr. Mayor, move for the resolution number R.22-
Hang on, hang on, I gotta abstain. Um, I'm a member of the, um, Clemson Action as well, and so I, I have a conflict of interest.
Second for that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Councilman Jablonski to abstain. Any discussion? Seeing none, although, oh, can't do that, can we? Go, go ahead, please.
Cresha?
Yes.
Laura?
Laura?
Yes.
Roth?
Yes.
Chilling?
Yep.
Barr?
Yes.
I get to vote twice.
Last one was Roth.
Motion passes. Councilman Jablonski, you may abstain. Now, we go forward.
Mayor, I move the resolution number R.22.91 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R.22-91 as presented.
He doesn't want it as as-
Oh, I'm sorry. He doesn't want, you want it as presented.
Oh, you wanted as-
Well, that's how it is, right? As presented.
Yeah, but, but Scott doesn't want to approve that. I mean, Scott's not going to sign that, just so we're clear in what we're voting for.
That will, that will not allow this to proceed as it is right now.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as shown here with us, with the hold harmless agreement. Any further discussion?
I'd, I'd clarify for me what-
We are approving what's, what's in front of us, which is the city, the city's recommendation, which includes the hold harmless, which if passed, then will cancel this event because Scott can't do it with that wording. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's approving the document as presented in your packet right now without any changes to it.
Which is the document that we are having discussion about and some issues about.
Okay, thank you.
Before we vote, somebody could make another recommendation.
Well, they, they want to amend that, I guess they.
Mm-hmm.
But seeing now, no further discussion. All those in favor as presented and seconded signify by aye, those opposed nay. One, two, three, one, two, three, oh, sure, Jablonski abstain, yeah, way to go. Gee, and Beth, where, where's, where's Beth when you need her? Well, and, and I, I will tell you this, technically it failed.
So is there, would, um, does anybody want to make a motion to remove the word invitees from paragraph 12?
I would so move.
Like, do you want other provisions in there that, for example, what the city administrator was talking about, additional fencing requirements as a trade-off, or just having invitees taken out, because then there's, then it, that's just taking that word out and the rest of the document remains the same?
Right. I would, I would add that, um, the fencing that we work together to provide some kind of temporary fencing to control the flow of traffic as best possible, and then maybe a requirement that Columbus Inaction takes pictures of the levee immediately before the start time and immediately after, to the best of your ability. I mean, that's going to be the next morning, though. So if you close at 1:00 a.m. and somebody tears around there between 1:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. the next day-
Chuck's not like, come out 1:00 a.m.?
No.
He might, he might be up.
Might be there.
I might, he might be with me, but we don't want to take his pictures at that point.
The picture may not be very clear, is it?
But that's to protect your liability, I mean, your, yeah. I don't know, is there anything else? Chuck, Rick, Neil, that you think I should add?
Just working with staff.
Yeah. Fire chief, Gray?
Sorry?
No, you're good.
Fire chief, Ryan Gray. Um, has there been any discussion about emergency response there down on the water? What that looks like and-
In the water, or just getting there?
I mean, if they're going to be down by the water, we need to make sure that we are equipped to handle, handle that as well. That's a, that's a pretty risky-
Well, they'll be, you'll be fenced off there, I mean, you'll be, have a controlled perimeter down there, to a certain-
There'll be a beer garden that be controlled perimeter, but then there'll probably be games or something outside that beer garden area going on.
I would include in your agreement, then, a discussion with fire and rescue personnel to have a, to have a plan in place.
And at least a site plan or some, something that we can prepare for ahead of time, but I think that's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Neil, did you have something?
No, I- I just want to know how to make the changes that we're looking for, so.
Yeah.
All right, so we would add, let's have a summary coming back with this.
Uh, yeah, um, a motion to approve this hold harmless agreement with the word invitees in paragraph 12 struck, and then to add a provision in, um, the hold harmless that Columbus Inaction has to work with the city to create some temporary fencing to direct the flow of traffic onto the concrete path, um, take pictures immediately before and immediately after the SDL timeframes, and provide us a site plan so that, um, emergency response can be properly coordinated. Period. Okay.
Okay, uh, if that would be a motion, do we have a second?
I think we had it ready.
Oh, did we have it?
Well, you'd have to amend, you need to amend the motion and the second.
So would you, you, would you, your motion amended as Tara missed?
Yes.
Okay.
Have a second, and then we have a second. So we have a amended motion with a second.
Yeah, and as long as there's no objection, you guys can just vote on that amended motion.
Any objections?
So could we hear the motion as it is today that we are voting on?
Yes. We are approving this hold harmless agreement with the word invitees in paragraph 12 stricken, struck, plus, um, and Clemson Action will be required to put in, uh, with the city's approval, some fencing to control the flow of pedestrians to the concrete path. They'll be required to take pictures immediately before and after the SDL timeframe and provide a site plan so that emergency response can be coordinated, um, efficiently.
So the hold harmless agreement remains in place, but the CIA has to produce greater control?
Yes. And the word invitees is taken out. So even if they have an event during that time and an invitee tears the heck out of the levee, they're not liable.
So that, that, that word will be taken out of paragraph 12, and I would probably add those other restrictions into paragraph three.
Okay.
Well, I can pretty easily make an off-the-cuff comment that if that levee gets torn the hell up, it will be the first and only time we try this.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's an irrelevant situation. This is a one-time deal. How does it han-
There's two SDL dates.
Okay, it's a two-time, well, we could bring it back and cancel the second one. But this is a, this is a, let's, let's try it, let's see how it is handled, and move forward or eliminate at that point in time. That's where we are right now, I believe. All right.
Do you want to add a provision, though, that then I can cancel the 31st if the 30th doesn't go well? Because we can't come back between those two back-to-back days.
Good point. I would have no problem with that, if they have trouble on the-
Yeah, yeah. So we'll add that as well to the motion. Is that, do you second, or make that motion print? Okay.
Good?
Yep, it's good for me.
Okay. All right. We have an amended motion that's been amended and amended and amended, so all those in favor of all those amendments, please say yea when your name is called.
Laura?
Yes.
Roth?
Yes.
Chilling?
Yep.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Yes. Abstain.
Cresha?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, brings us up to council comments. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir, please.
I just want to say thank you very much for that, your diligence on that. Uh, it is a one-time thing that, actually, hopefully it's going to be more of a one-time thing, uh, but I look forward to working with the city on getting this structured so that we can do this more often.
Awesome. Thank you, Scott.
Missed to do it.
All right, brings us up to comments from the council and mayor.
Um, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members have any comments this evening? The only thing I'd like to do is just make an announcement to general public. The senior center is looking for help delivering meals. If we have anyone that would like to volunteer some time and help deliver meals, anyone from the public would be welcome. They could call the senior center at 563-4444. All right. Saying that, we'll move on to new business.
Resolution-
Oh, I'm sorry, resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R.22-92, approving the contract with Oberuson Company Incorporated for the amount of $64,292.30 for levee piping, cleaning, and inspection.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number R.22-92 be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R.22-92. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. What is the piping? I, I'm aware of the tow drains, but what are, what is the piping?
Mr. Bogus?
It's any piping that crosses a levee, so storm sewers that go through the levee, sanitary sewers that go through the levee, anything like that, and the tow drain, as you noted, all those need to be inspected every five years, according to the Core.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 14B, resolution number R.22-93, approving the agreement with the School of EMS to designate the Columbus Fire Department as a clinical site for field training of EMT and paramedic students.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R.22-93 be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R.22-93. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 14C, resolution number R.22-94, adopting the lower Loop Natural Resources District Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R.22-94.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution- Motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two-two dash nine-four. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two-two dash one-eight amending sections thirty-three point oh one, thirty-three point oh two, thirty-three point oh four, thirty-three point oh eight, and thirty-three point two-five and deleting section thirty-three point oh six of chapter thirty-three of title three of the Columbus City Code to replace volunteer fire department with reserve firefighters. No motion is necessary unless we're going to suspend the rules. I think the desire of the fire chief is to request the council to suspend the rules.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance number twenty-two dash one-eight by number only at this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two-two dash one-eight by number only. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Roth.
Yeah, yes.
Chilling.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Hemer.
Yes.
Jablonsky.
Yes.
Creisha.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance number two-two dash one-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two-two dash one-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-two dash one-eight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Chilling.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Hemer.
Yes.
Jablonsky.
Yes.
Creisha.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Roth.
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned.